Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, September 8th. Thank you to everyone who's joining us here in the council chambers. Thanks to everybody watching online this evening. We will begin our meeting as we always do. If you are able, please stand, remove any covering, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thank you all for being here. Thanks, council, for your participation, and staff. Thanks for your work putting this all together tonight. Our first order of business, council, is to approve tonight's agenda. And on our agenda this evening, under item two, our introductory items, we have item 2.1, which is the introduction of new employees. Item 2.2 is a proclamation for suicide prevention, week and month. Item 2.3 is an award the city received from PETA, the People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, is a compassionate city award, which is a nice one. Then we have two appointments. Item 2.4 will be an appointment of a young adult member to the Human Rights Commission. And item 2.5 is an appointment to our Port Authority Commission. Under item three, our consent business, council member Rivas has our consent agenda tonight. We have seventeen items on tonight's consent agenda. Item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have seven items under that. Our first is, first two are resolutions. Item 4.1 is a resolution adopting the preliminary 2026 tax levy. And item 4.2 is a resolution adopting a preliminary 2026 general fund budget. We then have five straight public hearings, and they are assessments hearings. Item 4.3 is a public hearing regarding public nuisance abatement assessments. Item 4.4 is a hearing regarding tree removal assessments. 4.5, weed brush removal assessments. 4.6, the public hearing for delinquent water, sewer, stormwater drainage, garbage, recycling, and organics assessments. And item 4.7, a public hearing for civil fines for property-related violation assessments. Under item five, our organizational business. We will have an update on the Nine Mile Creek project, which we put off from our last meetings. We appreciate the patience of the folks, the staff members who are presenting that for us. And item 5.2, we will then go into closed session. We will go to a closed session for litigation management related to the 2024-110 Normandale Boulevard PMP Trail and Sidewalk Improvement Project. We will then come back into session. And actually, you know what I'm going to do, council, just make sure that we do this correctly? Item 5.1 will be the Nine Mile Creek Corridor Renewal Project Update. I'm going to call it 5.2, is going to be our public, our city council policy and issue update. I see that we don't have that officially on the agenda, I don't believe. So I'm going to add that on. Actually, I think we have it as 5.3. I'm going to make that 5.2, and then ask that we put 5.3 being the closed session. Does that make sense? And then, as I said, we come back into open session, and we will adjourn the meeting then. So with the one addition, adding or swapping item 5.2 and 5.3, are there any other changes or adjustments to our agenda this evening? Hearing none, I will move the agenda as stated. I will move it, and a second by council member Muah to adopt tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you all very much. And we will begin with an introduction of new employees. And I think we have new employees both in Parks and Rec and Public Works. And it looks like Parks and Rec is making the move first, so they get the first shot at the microphone. Ian Breckie is here this evening. Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, mayor and council members. I have the pleasure of introducing BCA's newest staff in 2025. And we'll start just to my right here. Siri Hellerman began as the new BCA Assistant Manager in May. And after a few reschedules of this intro, we just said, why don't we just introduce them together? So she's been waiting very patiently for a few months now. She most recently served as the Outreach Programs Manager and School Programs Coordinator for the Baken Museum over the last eight years. Her degrees are in theater and acting, with additional background as an arts educator, arts coordinator, teaching artist, actor, voiceover talent. Her college and earlier career experience were based in New York, with the last eight years now in the Twin Cities. Moving forward, Siri is leading BCA rental agreements, city use of BCA spaces, and any city-led arts education offerings. Her combined background of program management experience and her long career in the arts make her especially qualified for this role. She's been a fantastic addition to the team to date, and we are very lucky to have her at the city of Bloomington.
Good evening, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much. Thanks for having me. As Ian said, I've been here just almost coming up on four months now, and I've really enjoyed the challenge so far. So thanks so much. Happy to be here.
And I do have to ask, I mean, your voiceover talent, are you Siri?
I wish I could say yes. Unfortunately, I have to say no, as that is the truth.
The original Siri.
The original Siri.
She takes notes from me.
Then we, over here, we have Alan Weeks. Alan started as the BCA Maintenance and Production Superintendent on August 20th. Alan comes to the city from Theater Latte Da in Minneapolis, where he served as the Director of Production and Operations for over nine years. He specializes in facilities management, theatrical sound, lighting, video, rigging systems, and IT systems related to live performance. At BCA, Alan is in charge of the entire maintenance program for the facility. Leadership in production, that includes policies, procedures, scheduling, event management. He is overseeing all BCA equipment assets, and he supervises the BCA theater technicians. His extensive background of over twenty years in theatrical and venue leadership roles make him, make his addition a huge win for the city of Bloomington. And as we did with Siri, we are feeling very fortunate to be welcoming Alan to the team as well.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for welcoming us tonight. I'm excited to be a part of this wonderful team. It feels a little bit like a homecoming. My wife and I actually met in this building twenty years ago when we were working for Bloomington Civic Theater. So I'm excited to bring my skills to the city and look forward to the future. Thank you.
Well, I'm very cool. Very glad to have you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tim Berndt. Introducing.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to introduce two of our newest fleet technicians. I will start with Sam here. Sam was hired as fleet technician about two months ago, I would say. It's gone by quick. Previously, he worked for Ziegler Cat for about seven years. He does have an AAS degree in construction equipment technology. So he brings a lot of experience to the city of Bloomington, since we do work on a bunch of different equipment, from automobiles to heavy equipment, front-end loaders. Sam grew up in Farmington, and he enjoys watching his two girls play softball and hockey. And Sam's first project car was a 1981 Camaro that he drove to high school. And my question is, do you still have it?
I do not still have it, unfortunately. Too many tickets. Yeah, thank you for having me and look forward to the future here.
I'm very glad to have you with the city, and thanks for being with us tonight.
Our next fleet technician is Andrew Schmidt. He comes to us recently with safety science. He's got over eight years of experience with automotive and equipment maintenance. Andrew does have an AAS degree in automotive, specifically in GM. Andrew grew up in Burnsville, and he enjoys hunting, fishing, camping, snowmobiling, and he thinks he has too many hobbies. Keeps him busy with that. An accolade to Andrew. He graduated with an AAS degree when he was eighteen, and he got his AAS degree when he was nineteen. Welcome.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for being here this evening. Welcome. Glad to have you guys. Thank you. So Siri, Alan, Sam, and Andrew, I say to all new employees, we always have an opportunity to welcome new employees, and we always make a point of saying that we're glad to have you here. And in so many ways, you're a face of Bloomington. You're an important face of Bloomington, because people may recognize us, but it's the people that they interact with on a daily basis who are really the faces of the city of Bloomington. And so it's a big responsibility, but no doubt about your ability to do it very, very well. And very glad to have you on board, very glad to have you here tonight. Thanks for being here. Thanks very much. We'll move on, council, to item 2.2. And actually, I'm going to head down to the dais for both 2.2 and 2.3. Okay, I said I was moving down to the dais. I understand that's the dais. This is the podium. I understand that. I just got myself mixed up there. I apologize. Our first item, 2.2, is a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Week. The way we like to do these is invite folks up here to stand behind me while I read the proclamation, and then I'll turn the microphone over. And I know we've got Amy Chaney here. Amy, are you joining us? And Phil Kusner, the Suicide Voices of Education, President of the Board of Directors. Good to see you again. Welcome.
Nice to see you.
Yes, thank you. This is the City of Bloomington Proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Week and National Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas, suicide is a major community issue that requires vigilant attention and preventative action with eight hundred and thirteen Minnesotans dying by suicide in 2025. And whereas, each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire community. And whereas, the city of Bloomington is committed to ensuring that those in need have access to services by healthcare providers trained in best practices to reduce suicide risk and to reducing the stigma associated with using behavioral health treatment or losing a loved one to suicide. And whereas, the city of Bloomington recognizes organizations such as Suicide Awareness Voices of Education and its own internal Bloomington Cares team for their efforts in educating the public and providing services for those at risk. And whereas, the Bloomington Police Department is launching the state's first-of-a-kind loss team initiative, the LOSS Program, and that stands for Local Outreach to Suicide Survivors, will provide immediate, direct support to people and families in Bloomington who have experienced the loss of a loved one to suicide. And whereas, the month of September is recognized as Suicide Prevention Month, and September 7th through the 13th is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussi, do hereby proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Month and September 7th through the 13th as National Suicide Prevention Week in the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, and call upon the people of Bloomington to observe this month and week by working with your families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to become more informed of mental health issues that contribute to suicide, dated the 8th day of September, 2025. This has been a number of years we've done this proclamation here in the city of Bloomington, and it's always a good one, I think, to do, to raise awareness, to extend empathy to folks who have gone through some incredibly difficult times, and to make it more normalized that people can either seek help or seek relief after a tragedy takes place. So I'd be happy to turn the microphone over to...
Thank you. My parents started, say, thirty-six years ago with two other families. We lost, they lost a daughter and a son to suicide, and me a sister and a brother to suicide. So I'm vested in the organization. I'd like to express my gratitude to the city of Bloomington for this proclamation, for the partnership we have in preventing suicide, and supporting those who've lost loved ones. It's a recognition that's reflective of our partnership. Our side-by-side working together creates a healing, caring, supportive community where everyone can be cared for and supportive. Our LOSS Initiative with the city police department is a pilot program, and upon its success, we hope to bring it national. And I'd just like to thank you, mayor, the city of council, and the citizens of Bloomington. We really consider Bloomington our home. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. But I don't really have any prepared remarks, but I did want to say thank you for the support of the city council and city leadership for all these years, and all of the support from my coworkers, including all those on the Bloomington Cares Committee. Thank you.
Now, the second item that I am down here for... Back in August, yes, please come on up. Please come on up. Brian Greedle, Rena Weiss, and Jack Distel, who are behind this project. So just to explain it to folks who might not get all of this. So back in August, I received a letter from the People for Ethical Treatment of Animals. And it was a letter informing me that the city of Bloomington was going to be awarded a compassionate city award for building a passageway under a busy street to prevent turtles from being hit by cars. And it says in their letter, "Members of your community have shown extraordinary resolve, initiative, and compassion in taking action to protect animals." We're very proud of this and very proud of this project, because I know it is unique. I know a lot of people have been paying attention to it and have been probably calling, asking how you did it, and how they can do it as well. And I think it's just very cool that to receive a compassionate city award from PETA, I think, is very good. And I want to congratulate each of you, because I know this has been something that you've been working on. We've been talking about this for a while, and I know we've finally got around to it. And I love it. I love the idea of it. And somebody put the bug in my ear. We've got to get a trail cam in the culvert, because I want to see what's going through there. And I think that's a wonderful idea. So congratulations to all of you. I'm going to turn it over to whoever wants to say how this got from A to Z and take credit for it.
Great. Thank you, mayor. So this was a great, unique kind of opportunity for us to take advantage of some existing infrastructure that was already in the ground. There was a pavement maintenance project scheduled with Hennepin County. And so ahead of that, we had identified this culvert for replacement. And with some small tweaks to it, increasing the size of it, and a few things like that, we were able to accommodate passage beneath the roadway for the turtles, as well as maintaining the original drainage design that it was intended to function as. So, you know, with that, it was a great opportunity, I guess, for us to kind of combine compassion with sustainability and some creative infrastructure to make this happen. And it certainly took a team to make it happen. And it's been something that's been kind of going on here for a little while now. And so we are excited to have it in the ground, and it has generated a lot more excitement than we had even anticipated. So I just want to thank the community, as well as city council, and all the city staff that helps support the project.
Anybody else? Jack, you've never, come on.
No, no.
All right, let's get a picture over here. What's the whole of your ward? Congratulations. Well done. Not just everybody gets a compassionate city award from PETA. I'll just have you know. This is a, this is a pretty cool one. Well done. That's very cool. Thank you. Next on our agenda, council, I have to get it up on my computer here. We have an appointment to the, a youth member of the city Human Rights Commission. Hold on one second. Trying to get here. There we go. We have an appointment to our young adult member to the Human Rights Commission. We have one applicant and one opening. And so I appreciate the applicant who came forward and moved their name forward to sit in on the council from 9:125 to 8:3126. Council, we could, we could do the roll call vote, because, but because we have one applicant, I would look for, unless there is a dissenting opinion or if somebody has another name to add into the, to the mix, I would look for a motion to appoint Amari Musignak to the Human Rights Commission Young Adult Member position. Motion by council member Rivas, second by council member Alessandro, to appoint Amari Musignak to the Human Rights Commission. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Congratulations to Amari, as their appointment, well done. Item 2.5, council, is a second appointment, another appointment. This being an appointment to the Port Authority Commission. Tim Keller, who has served on the Port Authority for, I'm going to go with decades? Decades, stepped down. He resigned his position. Tim did a wonderful job. He is a lawyer by training, always brought a very interesting and a very direct eye and approach to the items that we did cover on the Port Authority. He did a fantastic job. I thank Councilor or Commissioner Keller for his work. With the opening, we looked at a variety of different options, but we had one person who had, had applied for the Port Authority. Last time, when we had, we had one opening, and we ended up reappointing a sitting commissioner. But went back to Cecilio Santana and asked if Cecilio was still interested in serving on the Port Authority. And he was. And so this officially, council, is a mayor's appointment, but what I want to do is make sure that we have the council approval of it as well. So with that as the background, and knowing that Cecilio, I think, is going to bring a unique and a strong voice to the Port Authority, I will move the appointment of Cecilio Santana to the term from the date of the appointment to December 31st, 2026, to the Bloomington Port Authority. Motion and a second by council member Muah to appoint Cecilio Santana to a term on the Bloomington Port Authority, ending December 31st, 2026. Any further council discussion on this? Councilmember Alessandro.
I just have a, sorry, mayor, I can't recall from before. When, when the decision was made to reappoint last time, was Cecilio the other choice that we would have made anyway?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Loma, a question? Oh, no? Okay. Any additional questions? We have a motion and a second of the appointment of Cecilio Santana to the Port Authority. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, and congratulations to Cecilio. Looking forward to working with you. We'll move on to our consent business tonight. Councilmember Rivas has tonight's consent agenda. Councilmember Rivas.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I will be holding item 3.1. And I move items 3.2 to item 3.16 on the agenda. So you...
Motion by council member Rivas, second by council member Muah to accept tonight's council, or accept tonight's consent business as stated. Any further council discussion on this? I'm sorry, I'm hearing from our city attorneys, 317. I'm only seeing 316 on the motion sheet, which is correct here.
On the, on the agenda sheet, it's got 317.
You have 317. I'm sorry. Councilmember Rivas, I apologize. The motion sheet is slightly different than the official agenda item that was put forward. If you would be willing to amend your motion to include item 3.17 as well?
Do I need to redo the whole thing, or just item 3?
I think if you just acknowledge it, you'd be willing to add, if you could just restate it.
Sure. I move to approve items 3.2 to 3.17.
Motion by council member Rivas, second by council member Muah to adopt tonight's consent business, items 3.2 to 3.17. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you for your flexibility on that, council member Rivas. Councilmember Rivas, item 3.1.
Yeah, I only held for, to make some comments about it. I'd like to thank the people and entities that donated funds to the city of Bloomington, specifically to Rosemary Tansel for her gift to Public Works, Blue Cross, Blue Shield for their donation to our Juneteenth celebration, to Mary R. Ganem for her donation in memory of her husband, Pat Ganem, to the Parks and Recreation. Thanks also to Walmart for their donation to the Bloomington PD. And last but not least, thank you to all individuals and entities for their donations to the city of Bloomington. That said, I move item 3.1, I move to approve item 3.1.
Motion by council member Rivas, second by council member Muah to accept item 3.1 on tonight's consent agenda. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, council member Rivas. Council, we'll move on to item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And we will start tonight with Kari Carlson, our Deputy Finance Officer. And item 4.1 is a resolution adopting the preliminary 2026 tax levy. Ms. Carlson.
Good evening, mayor and council. Much of what I'll be covering tonight will look familiar from the August 18th study session, but I wanted to present this information again, both as a refresher and for members of the public who haven't had the opportunity to see it yet. I'll walk through where we are in the budget process, the factors shaping our projections and preliminary proposal, and the steps we're taking to prepare for 2026. At the end of last year, our initial 2026 tax levy forecast showed a projected increase of 15.7 million, or almost 18%. A major driver was expiring funding, including public safety state aid supporting six positions, American Rescue Plan funds covering three battalion chiefs, and a safer grant that, funding 18 firefighters that ends in early 2026. And at the same time, lodging and admission taxes are expected to grow only slightly, and other revenues like permits and licenses are projected to remain flat. Knowing these challenges were ahead, the core budget team began early planning to identify ways to reduce the projected levy, and that work continues as we refine the 2026 budget. Our original forecast showed a $4.2 million increase in 2026 for debt service, but by scaling back or delaying some projects, we've reduced that impact to 1.5 million. The tax levy increase for debt is now 1.75% instead of nearly 5% for the tax levy. I also want to take a moment to note, again, that the community center, Ice Garden renovations, and Nine Mile Creek and Moore Park upgrades were approved by voters and are funded separately by the half percent local sales tax, so they don't affect the proposed preliminary 2026 tax levy. For the Normandale Lake District Tax Levy portion, the 2026 increase was originally projected at $450,000 more, possibly growing up to $900,000 in future years. And that is now reduced to $250,000 after removing a $5 million pedestrian bridge project, which lowered that levy need by about $200,000. At the end of 2024, we had a $4.4 million surplus from higher revenues and lower expenses than budgeted. And that amount was transferred to the Strategic Priorities Fund at the end of last month, bringing its balance to over $10 million. Of that, we are proposing to use 2.55 million to help stabilize the 2026 levy. Personnel costs are down 1.1 million, as the projected cost of living adjustment has been reduced. Departments are also limiting staff growth and focusing on internal reallocations. The goal is to stay competitive in attracting and... The goal is to stay competitive in attracting and retaining talent while managing overall personnel growth, cost growth. We're also seeing about $850,000 in health insurance savings from where we were originally projecting. Uh, this is due to favorable 96% claims to premium ratio. And those premiums, um, because of that, are going to remain flat for employees for 2026, which is a better outcome, much better outcome than we were expecting in the original forecast and unlike what many other cities are experiencing. And then this is the slide that brings everything together. So through the reductions in capital planning in the Normandale Lake District, the 2024 surplus, the personnel cost reduction, health insurance reduction, we've lowered everything, um, by about $7.4 million. So without those changes, that increase would have been much higher, but with these reductions, it's down to 9.44%. And then here is the preliminary general fund budget showing total revenues and expenditures. Property taxes make up about 68% of general fund revenues, followed by lodging and mission taxes at 9%. And then on the expenditure side, public safety accounts for nearly half of the general fund budget. So police at almost 41 million and fire at a little over 17 million. And then these next two pie charts, um, and as you've seen before, these show the revenue and expense breakdown visually. So starting with those revenues here, up on this slide, you can see that property taxes make up the majority of our revenues in the general fund. But there's also some other important sources, including lodging and admission taxes, permits, uh, license fees and grant revenues. And public safety makes up nearly half of the general fund expenses. This is the pie chart with the expenses. So police and fire there on the right being the largest share. The rest, um, are services like Public Works, which is also large, Parks and Recreation, and then Community Development, Public Health, and then the general government functions. And then here's the overall chart comparing the 2025 tax levy on the left to the proposed 2026 preliminary tax levy on the right. So the general fund would have an increase of 6.7 million, forestry, uh, Parks and Re, special revenue, an increase of 165,000. Debt would go up by 1.5 million. Most of the other areas are flat, um, while the Normandale Lake District does drop by 150,000, um, because of that, removing that pedestrian bridge. So overall, um, 8.3 million increase, which is a 9.44%. Here is a, a new slide from what we had before. So just another way of looking at that increase in tax levy dollars and percentages. So this is a breakdown by department of the 9.44%. So police accounts for the largest share of 2.99%, followed by fire, 2.03, Public Works, uh, 2.01, which does include some additional, uh, for debt payments. And then Parks and Recreation adds 1%. Finance, legal, admin, communications together is, uh, .81%. Public Health, .4, and Community Development, .2. So this is, um, kind of breaking out that increase in the tax levy. And then another way to look at it, how we look at budgets, um, is in, by categories. So this is in the different, uh, major categories that we have in the budget. With salaries and benefits, the majority, 5.83%. Um, debt payments and add an additional 1.75% increase. And then internal service fund charges, 1.01%. And then materials and supplies, .86. And then actual capital for the general fund decreasing slightly. Because the median value home increased by 1.1% from last year, and the homestead market value exclusion then decreased a bit as a result, uh, for the median value home, a 9.44% tax levy increase would translate to about 10.87% increase for the median value home. And that equates to roughly $3.19 a week, per week, $13.82 per month, or $165.81 a year. As you know, throughout the spring and summer, we did host some budget tables to share information about our 2026 budget process. So on Saturday, May 17th, there was a Public Works open house and also a Police Department open house on the same day, where we had a table at Public Works in the morning and one at, uh, over by the police station in the afternoon. We also had a, a table at the Juneteenth Celebration on June 21st and the Bloomington Pride Festival on June 22nd, and a farmer's market, um, table on Saturday, August 2nd. Also, for the first time last month, we invited residents to provide public comments at the August City Council Study Session, where we discussed, uh, the preliminary budget with council, um, so that there was a chance to influence budget decisions earlier in the process and not just at the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing in December. And key feedback we received, uh, focused on concerns about rising property taxes and the need for senior tax relief and protecting, and also protecting essential services. So we'll can, we will continue collecting input throughout this budget process, uh, using the Let's Talk Bloomington platform. And just wanted to add in here in response to some of those concerns, we've heard about rising property taxes and the need for senior tax relief. These next three slides just highlight the state of Minnesota's property tax refund program. Homeowners and renters may qualify for a refund based on their income and amount of property taxes paid. So for more details, residents, residents can visit the Minnesota Department of Revenue website or call the phone numbers listed on this slide. There are two types of refunds available through the state of Minnesota's M1 PR property tax refund, uh, form. The regular property tax refund is based on the relationship between property taxes and total household income, while the special property tax refund, uh, applies when taxes increase by at least 12% and $100 or more. And that is not, does not have a correlation to income. And those forms are due August 15th, but they can be filed up to one year later. And so to qualify, the property must be homesteaded. And the Senior Property Tax Deferral Program caps annual property taxes at 3% of the previous year's income, with the balance deferred until the property is sold or the deferral ends. To qualify for this program, applicants must be, must be 65 years of age or older. And if they have a spouse, they must be 62 or older and have household income under $96,000 and have lived and homesteaded the property for at least five years. And the interest for this accrues at up to 5%. So the Bloomington City Assessor's Office is available to assist residents with questions about this program. Wanted to share that the most recent national community survey results, high, results highlight several positive trends for Bloomington. Residents gave above average ratings for the natural environment, including the overall quality, preservation of natural areas, open space, recycling services and yard waste pickup. We also saw improved ratings in engagement and inclusivity with higher scores for sense of community, marking resident, making residents feeling welcome, caring for vulnerable residents, volunteer opportunities and openness to diverse backgrounds. I always like to highlight that we do have a dedicated city budget page at BLM dot MN slash budget. It includes a lot of helpful information, and we will continue adding updates as we move through this 2026 budget process. You'll also find a link there on the left to the Let's Talk Bloomington Budget Survey, which is live now, and provides an opportunity for the public to share feedback. So at the August 18th study session, uh, council focused, um, on balancing service needs with long-term planning, using the Strategic Priorities Fund wisely, exploring grants and sponsorships and prioritizing core services while practicing budget restraint. We will be using, uh, your feedback as we continue working through the priority-based budget process to help guide decisions and refine the 2026 budget. And, uh, again, priority-based budgeting is the new process we're using. Um, we're using our software to better align resources with the city goals. And, uh, we're proposing a 9.44% preliminary tax levy for council to set tonight. But we'll continue refining the budget through December to look for ways to reduce that increase before your final adoption. And in these phases for priority-based budgeting, we've completed the first three phases in the software, creating an inventory of programs, scoring them based on impact and alignment with priorities and determining costs. We're now in phase four, using the data to identify opportunities, make adjustments, better align resources before the final levy is set in December. And I'll just say, we've started this process and it is a lot of information to go through. Um, but we're, um, looking through it and trying to find out the best way that we can incorporate that into our, um, budget presentations. And then this is the calendar that you've seen before, but this shows the key milestones in this process with council. So tonight, you will be setting the preliminary levy. Then from now through November, we will continue budget discussions and refine projections. That Truth and Taxation Public Hearing, it will be December 8th, with final council approval of the 2026 tax levy and budget on December 22nd. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Appreciate it. Uh, council questions? I, I do have one just to open. Uh, as I, your slide on the priority-based budgeting phases, phase four, explore insights and opportunities, August through October. Uh, what, how are you gonna bring back that, that back to the council? How are we gonna know about your conversations about staff discussions, about the insights that, uh, have been going through this process?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council. So, right now, we're, um, hopefully planning for the September 29th, um, City Council meeting to have a presentation where we're, we'll be sharing some of that input that came from this work. So that would be your first look at what's coming from the priority-based budgeting, um, da- data that we got and information. And then also, as we go through, um, presentations from departments, talking about how that was incorporated into their budget and different things for you to consider.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Counsel, questions here? We've seen a good chunk of this information previously. Uh, Councilmember Rivas and Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Rivas?
Hi there. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a, I just have a quick question. Uh, the debt levy was reduced by the, the fairing projects, right? By canceling and pushing them down a couple of years or so. How does that, um, what kind of risk do we have by having that approach? And, and we did, and I enable us to, um, raise the tax levy in future years.
Uh, Mayor, council members, Councilmember Rivas, um, so we're working, you know, finance is working closely with, um, departments on what those projects are, like s- some of the fire stations or public works projects. Um, I mean, there's a, one of the things that can happen is you push things out, as things can get more expensive or more expensive than we think they're going to, to get. But, uh, the plan that we have, um, is a compromise between trying not to push things out too far and making sure that we're addressing the needs of the facilities and infrastructure. But it is a balance of being able to make these improvements as well as keep the tax levy reasonable.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Loman?
Oh, kinda stole my thunder a little bit there, so I was gonna, I was gonna ask a little bit about that. So, all I wanna really just do, just comment a little bit here is, is the, uh, the 18%, um, which we were looking at coming in, into this year and getting that down to, to this 9%, I think is outstanding, uh, that staff has done, uh, to, to, to work this down to where, where it is. So I'm, I'm happy in terms that we're under, under the 10% uh, plan, um, uh, to, to kinda get this where it is today. And I appreciate all the responses that, uh, that staff, uh, provided, uh, with regard to this and many other items that I had, especially around the enterprise fund. I know there's some folks that are, are concerned about that, and I, I am one of those people. Cause those, uh, you know, what's going on with the aquatic piece. I'm watching that, uh, carefully and, and only time will tell in terms of what will, what that will look like. And it's, it's great that we have our golf moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Alessandro?
Hi, Ms. Mayor. Thank you. Appreciate you being here, Kari. Um, just very quickly on our strategic objective associated with, um, the movement to the full-time fire department. In my, in my understanding that, um, I know we, we are deferring some of the work associated with the fire stations themselves, but we are absorbing the, uh, in here, the firefighters that we were originally, uh, receiving the safer grant for, correct? So that first tranche of 18 or so is now budgeted for in this 2026 budget. Do I have that right?
Yes, uh, Mayor, council members, Councilmember Alessandro, that is correct. So now within the general fund budget, we have, um, the majority of 2026 for those 18 firefighters, along with three fire battalion chiefs that had previously been partially funded from the American Rescue Plan.
Okay. So, um, from a personnel perspective, we're on track for the movement to the full-time firefighter staff. We're behind then on the facilities because we're deferring some of the building changes that we're looking to make. Do I have that right?
Yes, Mayor, council members, Councilmember Alessandro, that is correct. We have, um, pushed a bit the, the building, the fire station remodels from where we were last year.
And, and, and we can table this and ask Chief Seal this more in depth if we, if it's the right place to do that. But I'm curious, what are the mitigation strategies? If we're not, if we're not backing off on hiring personnel, what are we, where are we putting them, I guess, is my open question. And, uh, is, does this budget reflect that? Um, any, any funding for putting them somewhere other than in a, in a, a building that we need to capitally build? So is it an expense item now or something to that effect? I'm curious, as, as I said before, right? I very much want to look at some of these strategic initiatives that we're doing over multiple years as their own thing, because they have impact across the budget, right? They have personnel or operating income ba- budget implications. They have capital project income, uh, implications and things like that. And it's hard to see that when you just talk about it at the department level. So I, I, I'm asking this question. You're welcome. You can certainly defer it. But I would like to know if we know where we're absorbing the operational impact of housing those full-time people when we don't have the capital project underway to build them a, a place to stay. Yes.
And I think, Councilmember, I think you answered your own question when you said we should get Chief Seal back here for that detailed answer, because, uh, he, he would have that answer and, um, whether or not they're, uh, bunking in less than perfect conditions like we saw on the tour when we took the tour over the summer, or, uh, they've got other possibilities. Uh, I, I'm not sure, but I think Chief Seal would probably have the best answers for it.
Yeah, and my, my answer, my reason for asking that question, right, is, uh, if we're spending, I'm making up numbers, right? If we're spending X number of dollars, millions of dollars, maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to house them in less than ideal environments, how much of those hundreds of thousands of dollars a year can be put towards the actual capital project to build them what they need, right?
That's a good point.
And I'm wondering if that assessment is happening as part of this budget process. And if it's not, that's fine. But eventually it has to, right? Cause we have to know when the lever tips over. Or we're gonna spend five or 10 years worth of operational stuff and could have had a fire department built out of that. Right? Okay. Thanks.
Good point. Thank you, Council.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Kari. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I just have a quick question. Um, I appreciated the new slide that had the breakdown by department. And, um, I'm, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the 2.99, almost 3% increase in the police department? Um, is, is that mostly salaries and benefits, things like that, or are there specific things that? I, I was a little bit surprised that police was higher than fire because we are absorbing so many new, uh, the firefighter positions from this, that were covered by a safer grant and, um, and as well as the three battalion chiefs, so.
Sure. Uh, Mayor, council members, Councilmember Carter, the, the reason that the police, um, budget is the highest one up there is if you look at the overall general fund budget, it's, um, by far our largest, um, amount in the general fund budget. So we have 41 million. So, um, the majority is in salaries and benefits just by the size of our police department. So the increases that we are projecting right now, um, when you have 41 million dollars and then you're, um, and I don't have right here in my head, uh, how much of that is salaries and benefits and other things, but, um, just benefits and other things, but just overall, the size of it, when there's an increase, what we're forecasting right now for cost of living adjustments or step increases and things like that, that tends to be the largest increase. And whereas fire compared to that in the general fund budget is not as large, but because of the additional fire, full-time fire staff coming on, that is why it's right up there as well.
Sorry, thank you, that makes sense. And then I know in the past, we, we've always asked this, but do we have any sense where other cities are coming in for their preliminary levies?
Yes, and Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Carter. So, not officially, we won't get the, until everyone is doing what we're doing right now. We don't know officially what they're going to be setting their preliminary levies at, but just talking to other cities, there's a lot that are in that 8% range, it seems like on average, with a few higher than that, like as high as in the 12% or 14%. That's kind of our peers that we look at. But we didn't want to publish anything like officially tonight until they had actually approved it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Council? Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments on this if we're past the question phases.
Fire away, Councilmember.
All right, so, you know, I, I think that this preliminary levy really does represent the shared values. I know that, you know, former councilmembers talked about the idea that these represent values. And really, I think this is a good, strong foundation for our future. And the things that I'm concerned about as we kind of move forward and was looking at that, you know, my, my colleague brought it up, I'm concerned about inflation and infrastructural concerns, and also when we look at staffing as we kind of look forward for 2027 and 2028. And I, I know part of that's going to be in our, in our new process that we have that's going to roll us, roll ourselves into, into a two-year kind of period of time and, and also uncertainty of the, of the economy in terms of what that looks like. But I, I think that based on what we have kind of put together here, I, I think we can stay disciplined, and this is very transparent in terms of our processes, it's a good process for generations to come, what we put together here today. So, with that being said, I can certainly support this, Mayor. I'd be happy to, to make that motion if we want to do that.
Let's make sure, Councilmember Revas?
Yeah, if I can make a comment.
Please.
I ju, I, I learned as I was reading the agenda that the Port Authority and the HRA have major increases in their tax levies. So my concern is that we have it at 9.8 for the, the, our tax levy for the property taxes, but the increases that the Port Authority and the HRA are asking for are very high. I mean, they, they're pushing up to the limit, basically, the HRA, not the, the Port Authority. So my question is, taking that into account, is there an impossibility that we can even bring the tax levy further down, small amount at least, to compensate for that? Because I can see that the other two are going to make a major difference on the total percentage of a tax levy increase for the year.
So, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Revas, so tonight you'll be setting the preliminary tax levy for 2026, so that's the most that they could be, or that it could be. And during consent tonight, the, the port and HRA levies, preliminary levies were approved. So, this is the highest it can be, and the plan would be for us to refine this, to, to bring this down. And also, it's the highest that the port and HRA levies can be as well, so there is a chance that those could be lowered as well before December.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to provide a little more insight from the HRA perspective, we obviously know there's a lot going on at the federal level, where we don't know if funding is going to continue to come in. And so, during our discussions about the preliminary levy at the HRA level, that was very much the case of, we want to drive this down because we know this is property tax dollars to ensure that we are supporting residents as much as possible, but we're also preparing for worst-case scenario where we're losing all our funding. So, the HRA specifically is doing a significant amount of work to ensure that they're balancing the needs of the community with the uncertainty that we're facing right now. So, to Councilmember Revas's point, being a member of the HRA, I fully intend to continue that work with the HRA to make sure that we're prioritizing that and reducing it as much as we can. I'll just make my comments while I'm here. I, I appreciate the work that staff has done so far. We always put out that preliminary number end of the year, and it's always really high, and people latch on to that. But that's because those are real costs, real things that we have to do. And just like any other household in Bloomington, we have an idea of what it's going to cost, and then we take a look at our budget and say, this is what we have to cut, this is what we have to prioritize, and so we're going to fix our roof. But that doesn't mean that the foundation still isn't cracked. We're going to have to fix that eventually. And so, I appreciate the work that staff is doing. I'm really looking forward to all the priority-based budgeting to continue to drive this down, to make sure that we can continue to prioritize effectively and efficiently to ensure that we're keeping that balance, because there are lots of things that we still have to do. There are fire depart, fire buildings that still need to be updated. I'm still waiting for Fire Station 2 to get updated. There have been a couple fires by my house, and I wish Fire Station 2 was updated because they would have been there on time. And so, I, I can support the 9.44. I think we have done significant work to get to 9.44, and I know staff is going to continue to work to drive this number down, and looking forward to what we have come up in October or November. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say thank you to staff for all of the hard work getting this number down quite substantially. I, I feel very confident that lots of rocks were overturned, and there was lots of creative thinking and brainstorming, and so really appreciate that. I also look forward to the priority-based budgeting and see what kind of impact that that can have in our decision-making, just as we look for further ways to reduce spending and find efficiencies. So I will be supporting the 9.44% tonight, understanding that the goal is to bring it down even further. And I just, you know, I, I'm stating the obvious for all of us up here, but, you know, we're one entity that is taxing residents, just one of them. And then we also have utilities and the HRA and the port and franchise fees and all these other ways that people are taxed, and all of those are, for the most part, most of them are going up. And so, you know, I, I, I hear, you know, during our last session in August, really heard the people saying that they're feeling the pressure, and I, and I believe it, I think most of us are, right, in terms of increasing costs. I don't think any, well, I shouldn't make assumptions that any of us are part of the 1% or anything up here, but like, I think we're all feeling the increasing costs. And so, so I guess I just, I say that out loud so that people watching tonight understand that we are keeping that in mind, and staff are keeping that in mind. Many staff live in Bloomington, so they're also experiencing, you know, increases in costs and, not just from the city, but just in general. And so, I just implore staff to continue to do the hard work and, and, and find ways that we can do our best to bring this down even further. Thank you.
Well, Council, as we heard, the, the budget process calendar, we've got our, we're setting our preliminary 2026 levy this evening. To make the point again that Ms. Carlson made, that it cannot go any higher, it can only come down. After a preliminary levy is set by state law, it can only come down, it cannot go higher. We will continue to work on budgets through the fall into October and November. We will have our Truth in Taxation public hearing on December 8th, with the goal of December 22nd being the meeting where the council would approve the final 2026 tax levy and budget. Anything else, Council? If not, Council, I would look for action on item 4.1 this evening.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution, a resolution preliminary establishing tax levy for the city of Bloomington for the year of 2026.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the resolution preliminarily establishing tax levies for the city of Bloomington for the year 2026. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And, Council, with the, the second item is item 4.2, this is the resolution adopting the preliminary 2026 general fund budget, which was part of the presentation that we did just here. I would look for action on item 4.2. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I'll move a resolution adopting a preliminary 2026 general fund budget.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the resolution adopting a preliminary 2026 general fund budget. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, and thanks to the, to the entire staff, because I know the entire staff has been working on this basically since January, and I've been working through all of this. Please share specific, thanks to other members of your staff who are really crunching the numbers for us and getting this work done, and look forward as we continue this conversation into the fall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Council, we'll head into our series of public meetings, and these are public meetings all related to assessments. We're going to start with item 4.3, our public hearing on a public nuisance abatement assessment. But if I'm recalling this presentation in the past, we'd roll them all together and just kind of power on through the presentation and then have the public hearings individually.
Mayor and Council, we have it currently scheduled at the, throughout the PowerPoint, a different PowerPoint, that, sorry, that, we'll have the public hearings as we go through.
Okay, very good.
So, it is all of the assessments and the different types of assessments, we have five different types that we'll be bringing forth to council tonight. And I'll just go right to the definitions of what each one of them are. So on the public nuisance abatements, these are property conditions declared to be nuisance affecting public peace, welfare, and safety. We also have tree removals, and that's for removal of dead and diseased trees. And council, we created a different type of assessment model a couple of years back, and you'll see people taking the three-year, the five-year, and the 10-year model, depending on the price of those as tree removals. There's weeds and brush, which is the mowing and weeds and brush removal type assessments. The delinquent utilities, and that's in the water, sewer, storm drain, garbage, recycling, and organics, and then in the civilized area. Our normal process is to accumulate all the data on all of these types of assessments, and letters are mailed out July 1st for all of those. And then those that still are unpaid for August 14th, though, are listed in the Sun Current, and those publication information was put in the packet for the council. There was a public hearing, administrative hearing on August 27th. There was six different items that were brought for the administrative hearing judge, and I'll go through those as we finish each section. And then tonight is the council special assessment public hearing for all five of these areas. And then no later than December 3rd, the cert, the clerk will certify the list of unpaid assessments in each of these areas to the county. And so, first up is the public nuisance abatement area. And in that area, there were 14 customers for a total of just under $6,000. One of those customers of the 14 did appear at the administrative hearing, and the outcome was a recommendation for full assessment of that amount to the assessment rolls. Is there any questions on public nuisance abatement?
Let's start first, Council. Any questions on the presentation leading up to this, just the information about the assessments and the, and the work that we're doing here tonight? All right, does anybody have any specific questions regarding the public nuisance abatement, item 4.3 this evening? Very good. We will open the public hearing then. This is a public hearing on item 4.3, public hearing regarding the public nuisance abatement assessment. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.3 this evening? Anyone? Priyanka, do we have anyone on the phone this evening?
Mayor, we do not have anyone online.
Last call for anyone in the chambers to speak to item 4.3. Council, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one on the phone? I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.3. Motion by Councilmember Revas, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to close the public hearing on item 4.3. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0, with Councilmember Muah having stepped away. Council, any questions anymore, discussion on item 4.3? If not, Council, I would look for a motion to adopt the resolution adopting the assessment role for public nuisance abatements. Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Revas, to adopt the resolution adopting the assessment role for public nuisance abatements. No further discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Item 4.4?
Mayor and Council, this item is on tree removal. And on tree removal, there are six properties for just under $28,000. Of those six properties, two of those properties are looking at a three-year levy, three properties are looking at the five-year levy, and one property is looking at the 10-year levy. And at that?
Council, any questions on the tree removal? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to confirm the, this particular item is about the, the, the opportunity we, we passed a while back to allow people to get help with tree removal and have it put on their assessment. Is that correct? Do I have that right?
Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro, yes.
Okay.
Prior to the amendment of the ordinance for the tree removal, it was a one-year period for the full cost plus interest. This is a similar interest, and it is now at a three, a five, and a 10-year time. So depending on the price of, and number of trees that they had to have removed in their yard, we are setting up a new process for them. Is this the second year or third year that we've had?
I couldn't remember, it was the second year or third year? Yeah, great. It, is the, were there any people, there's nobody that we reject from this program, correct? And so, six people chose to take advantage of this program is another way to say that? If we have six people on this role right now, there's nobody that we would have rejected from this process, correct?
Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro, that is correct. And if they were to take, for example, if someone had their tree removed in the fall of '24, they could have paid off that amount prior to moving forward today. So, they would have had nine months to pay it off, too.
Sure, understood. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions, Council? If not, I will open the public hearing on item 4.4. This is a public hearing regarding tree removal assessments. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.4 this evening? Priyanka, anyone on the phone?
Mayor, we do not have anyone online.
In the chambers, last chance for anybody speaking to item 4.4? No one coming forward, Council, no one on the phone? I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.4.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to close the public hearing on item 4.4. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. So, Council, I'm going to look for motions on these three things, and I'm going to tell everybody upfront that I will be abstaining on the second motion for the resolution adopting for the five-year levy, because my address is on that list for a five-year levy. I had two big trees taken down last year and using the opportunity to pay for it over five years as opposed to one. So just to talk to, talk about that upfront. So, but I would look for a motion now, unless there's additional questions, Council? I would look for a motion to approve the resolution adopting the assessment role for the delinquent tree removal costs for a three-year levy.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Muah, to approve the resolution adopting the assessment role for delinquent tree removal costs in the three-year levy. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Council, I would look for a motion now to approve the resolution adopting the assessment role call for delinquent tree removal costs for a five-year levy.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Revas, to approve the resolution adopting the assessment role for delinquent tree removal costs for a five-year levy. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Mayor will abstain from this, so it passes with a 6-0 vote. And finally- And finally, Council, I will look for a motion to approve the resolution adopting the assessment role for delinquent tree removal costs for a 10-year levy.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Carter to approve a resolution adopting the assessment role for delinquent tree removal costs for the 10-year levy. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to item four point five, a public hearing regarding weed brush removal assessments. Ms. Economy Sholler.
We did a little, Mayor and Council, we did a little digging into the weeds and brush. And as you see, the third line down in the chart, over the last three years, there have been 12 repeaters of the total number of properties involved in those three-year period, of 114 properties. 12 of those have had been repeated over the last three years. And then on the weeds and brush, there are a total of 49 properties for a total of just over 20,000. One of those properties was at the administrative hearing. And for that specific property, the recommendation was to not assess for that one property. So that was the information on weeds and brush removal.
Council, any questions regarding item four point five, weed and brush removal? For the record, my yard is looking shaggy, but I'm not on this list. Just so we're clear. Just wanted to be clear. Okay. A question, Councilmember Reva?
No more May. I always get a letter from the city because I let it grow in May. But I do it just when I get.
I think as long as you, as you mow, after you get the letter, I think you're fine, Councilmember Reva.
All right. Sounds good. I usually wait until then.
I will open the public hearing now on item four point five. This is a public hearing regarding weed and brush removal assessments. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point five this evening? Priyanka, anyone on the phone?
Mayor, we have no one online.
Last call in the chambers? Council, no one coming forward, no one on the phone to speak to item four point five? I would look for a public, I would look for a council motion to close the public hearing on item four point five.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Reva, second by Councilmember Muah to close the public hearing on item four point five. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, Councilmember Lohman, a question?
Just a real quick, just David, I just want to let staff know.
Council, Councilmember, this is just to close the public.
Oh, right. Sorry. Thank you.
It's just to close the public.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Questions on this? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment, just to staff, that across really all these items, including this one here, you know, looking at, is there concentration or patterns of, of delinquency across these things? I just want to let you know how much I appreciate you responding to that. I didn't want to keep asking that every single year as I come up there. So I appreciate staff's willingness to, to be able to respond and look at that. Because I do think that that's a question that, that some folks have when they look at that. And I have been asked that before. How does that look? And is there concentrations of these things? So I wanted to appreciate the staff's ability to respond if you wanted to say something.
Mayor and Councilmember Lo, and it depends on the number of complaints that come in for environmental health to go and review. So it's based off of that.
Any further council comments on this, questions? If not, on item four point five, Council, I would look for a motion to approve a resolution adopting the.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I had a question and I, or a comment, and I didn't get you in my line of sight in time. I apologize for that.
I apologize, Councilmember Dalisandro.
No apologies for interrupting you. So this, this particular item has been a repeat, like a really active issue in Bloomington this year. And, and I, I don't know that these numbers accurately reflect the amount of work that has to have been done this year on this, on this particular item by, by staff to try to help our, our neighbors kind of corral this problem. And so I, I don't know, my comment is simply that an intriguing to the public, right? That everybody being a good neighbor helps this whole thing out, right? I, I'm most positive that for these numbers that are here, the number probably was tripled, except that the, the team did a really good job of trying to work with people and send out crews and do the kinds of things that, that they could do to help. So to that extent, you know, I, I might want us to consider maybe a relooking at this whole program to see if we need to do something a little bit more proactive as a city on this issue. So I'll throw that out there as a general comment we can get to as we think about 2026 priorities. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And with that, happy to make the motion or happy to approve the motion as you stated.
Councilmember, the, the motion was to approve the resolution adopting the assessment role for weed and brush removal costs.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Muah to approve the resolution adopting the assessment role for weed and brush removal costs. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item four point six, also a public hearing, this regarding delinquent water, sewer, stormwater drainage, garbage, recycling, and organics assessments. Ms. Economy Sholler.
Mayor and Councilmembers, on the delinquent assessments for the utilities, this chart here represents five years of look back to see who are repeat customers that have us bring it to an assessment letter in July. Of the, the points on the list, there, there are 94 properties in Bloomington that are consistently on the five-year roll here of not, not paying their bill during the year and having us bring it to assessments process. So just want to let you know that there are 94 of them out there, and they're spread throughout the whole entire city. And so on this particular one, there are 876 properties at the end of August that were still outstanding for a total of just under $1,100,000 of outstanding. No one in this category had requested an administrative hearing, and no one appeared at that administrative hearing. So all of the information on all of those assessments did get published, and you'd see all of those pages in your packet.
Thank you, Ms. Economy Sholler. So you, you showed us the repeat offenders, just from a general idea, how do we stand this year as opposed to last year or previous years? Just in terms of general numbers?
Within the council packet, I believe it's on page 173, you have the statistics for the last 10 years of data. Each year, it's grown about, in dollar amount, about 15% in individual amounts. It's about a 1% to 2% increase in the number of properties that have added each year. Generally, since garbage has come up, the dollar amounts have grown a lot since garbage came on in 2016.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions on this one? If not, thank you very much, Ms. Economy Sholler. This is a public hearing on item four point six. Delinquent water, sewer, stormwater drainage, garbage, recycling, and organics assessments. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point six this evening? Priyanka, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mayor, we do not have anyone online.
Anyone in the chambers? Council, no one in the chambers coming forward, no one on the phone wishing to speak? I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point six. Motion by Councilmember Reva, second by Councilmember Dalisandro to close the public hearing on item four point six. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Council, any comments on this? Questions? Anything to bring up? Scanning carefully, so as not to miss anyone? All right. If not, I would look for a motion to approve a resolution adopting the assessment role for delinquent water, sewer, stormwater drainage, garbage, recycling, and organics utility charges. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Dalisandro to adopt the resolution, or accept the resolution adopting the assessment role on utilities as outlined in item four point six. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And item four point seven, Ms. Economy Sholler.
Mayor, this is the final assessment for civil fines and property-related violations. There are 116 properties involved for just under $163,000. Four of those properties did appear at the administrative hearing, and the judge recommended full assessment on those four that came before them.
Council, any questions to Ms. Economy Sholler on this one? No questions? Thanks much. We will open up the public hearing on item four point seven. This is a public hearing regarding the civil fines for property-related violation assessments. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak to item four point seven this evening? Please, come on up. And as you come up, I will thank you for joining us this evening and sticking it out and let you know, as we run our public hearing, what I'll need you to do is identify yourself as you start and speak into the microphone. We do limit each comment in public hearings to five minutes. We've got the shot clock on the wall to, to keep track of you. And when you hit five minutes, I'm going to have to cut you off. Not because I'm, not because I'm mean, but I'm trying to make sure that everybody has the same amount of time. So good evening and welcome.
Thank you. I've, I've never done this before, so hopefully I don't screw up.
You're, you're doing great so far. Well done.
My name is Jeremy Hildene. One of, my, my house is one of the ones on the list. I have a garage in need of some repair. And I came, I, I was one of the ones that had the hearing and tried to plead my case. And I felt like my fate was sealed before I even got in the door. It was really aggravating. I had made my intents clear that I want to replace the garage. And in my evidence that I gave, I had plans that I had brought up, quotes I had gotten, quotes I had signed off on that I then got fined for not being able to complete. Because I hit this massive roadblock when it came to getting the new garage permitted. And there is literally nothing to help someone with no experience navigate these waters of getting a replacement dwelling permitted. And I begged for someone to come to my house. I'm like, the garage I want exists three doors down. Would look fine in the neighborhood. Oh, but it doesn't meet code. You've got to move it. What I would have had to have done to build my garage would have decimated my property value. Because I live on a corner, and I would have had to move my garage back 16 feet, basically making my house and my garage parallel, eliminating my backyard. And I have kids. I need that backyard. And I even explained in my hearing, I lost my job in February. I don't have the money to pay the fine right now. I just got ahold of my water bill before, before I came here. You know, money is, is tight right now. So I was asking for some compassion and some humility. And now I want some help, you know? I even asked, like, why, why don't you call people? Why do you just do all this stuff via the mail? And I got a snarky comment that, oh, we have over 200 of these a year. That's one phone call a day. Someone just called me and said, hey, we noticed it not fixed. What's going on? I could have worked with someone instead. I get a letter when it's too late. There's nothing I can do. And I'd also like to mention out that the, the individual, I won't name names, but the person taking the pictures is, is really kind of creepy. They parked on the street, took a diagonal picture of my house and my garage, including my daughter's bedroom. You know? Just knock on the door, ask, take pictures, but to sit there and play like private eye and take pictures from your car and slulk through neighborhoods, that's just weird. You know? I've, I'm trying, you know? I want to replace the garage. I got a quote to replace it. I got a, a quote to get it fixed. And the person I went through to get it fixed just goes to me. They stopped responding to phone calls. They stopped responding to my text messages. I don't know if they're still in business anymore. But these things also aren't the easiest to do because a lot of these vendors have existing plans. They're, they're already contracted to do other work. I can't say, well, I need you now. I have to get on their list. And it went as far as when I was trying to get the garage repaired, the first time it happened, I was scheduled for, I think it was the 30th of October, and it snowed. Well, you can't paint in the snow. You can't climb on the roof of the garage in the snow. So there was nothing I could do. Second time was in November. And if you guys remember November last year, it rained more often than not in November. Again, I couldn't get the work done. And they're just, I, I was, I was frustrated. If I had any hair, I'd have been pulling it out. It's like, instead of wanting to work with me, they were just pointing their finger at me and basically treating me like garbage.
Mr. Hildene, let me ask, what, what is your address? And how much is the, the assessment or the fine that we're talking about?
Address 8444 Emerson Avenue South, right across from Bryant Park that they're retrofitting at this point. That also might have played an issue as well because they generated a lot of dust when they were digging up that park. And I'm literally right on the corner across from one of the ponds. Could you paint with all that dust in the air? Or would I have a permanently dirty garage? Fine was for $500. And I called right away when I got the email. Because I got an email before I even got the letter in the mail. And I called right away, and they said there's nothing they can do. I explained my situation, and they lacked another $50 on there for non-payment. And I'm like, well, I can't pull the money out of thin air. You know? It, it's gotten so tough, to be honest with the council. And I know my time is almost running out. But my daughter got kicked out of her summer care program because I couldn't afford to pay for it. You know? It, it's tough out there for everyone. I'm sure you guys know that. You hear a lot of stories. But I would really hope that this, the city would set something up to help people navigate these things better and not just the threats in the email. Like, talk to people, work with people. I'd love to learn more about the permitting process and stuff like that. You know? I was excited to get this new garage, and my hopes and dreams got dashed.
When you, you said you went before the ALJ, the, you went through the process, right?
Right.
And, and what was their response? When, I'm assuming you told them what you just told us? Is that correct?
Yeah. You're talking about the, the hearing on the 22nd of August.
The hearing, yeah.
I told them everything. I had my evidence. I showed them pictures of the garage, why I wanted to tear it down, the quotes I got, and everything like that. And it was just, he said plenty of time, fine him.
All right. Council, any questions to Mr. Hildene here? Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Dalisandro. Councilmember Nelson.
Do you have any copies of that information?
Yes, I brought the packet with me.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Dalisandro, if you have questions, well.
No, well, yeah, thank you. I just want to acknowledge and thank you for coming to council tonight. I know this is not easy. We had a chance to have a conversation on the phone. I, I have explicit understanding of the area that you're talking about because it's in my patch. I know that we have, Mr. Mayor, I know that, I guess my question, I don't know whether or not, I don't have it explicitly for them, maybe for our process. Did we, did we have, because we're also doing work on like corner lot revamping and all that kind of stuff, was that of consideration as part of the conversation to be had on this particular property? Or was that not related in any way to? In other words, we're already looking at how these corner lots can be impacted. Our, our code doesn't work great on corner lots. We already know this. That's why planning's doing something about it. I'm just wondering if that was a factor? And, and could it be a factor in understanding the particular plight here, considering this is a corner lot?
Yes. And, and I guess I don't know the, the answer to that. I'm not sure what they were using as a, the rationale of the assessment and how they were looking at it. That's a good question, though, because yes, we do have trouble with corner lots here in Bloomington.
We have trouble block to block with inconsistencies, which, you know, drive everybody crazy, I can tell. everybody crazy, I can tell. The other piece of this, Mr. Mayor, that I know we have, we, we have long standingly said that we have a program within, I think it's within the HRA, of providing loans and other things like that to help people with their refurbishments when they can't do it on their own. My question would be, you know, was that presented as an opportunity as part of the hearing for this particular, you know, resident? Or in general, do we offer that as part of, you know, an abatement strategy as opposed to just finding people and leaving them to their own devices?
I'm sorry, council member. I'll admit, I was
That's okay. That's all right.
Looking at possibilities here, so trying to figure.
Yep, totally understand. I appreciate that. The second part of my question was about, we, we have a program, I believe within the HRA, that offers low cost or, you know, better rate loans and things like that for people to help with home improvement. My question is, do we offer that as an opportunity as opposed to just finding people and leaving them to their own devices as part of this mitigation strategy? Do we offer that to those folks during this process?
I, I don't know that we offer that specifically. I think the HRA home improvement loans are separate than this. But, I mean, it's an interesting thought to perhaps bring the two together.
I would much prefer to offer a, a solution rather than just a punishment if we have one readily available, even if it's in a different department.
Yep. Counsel member Lomond, do you have questions directly of Mr. Hildene here?
I, I've got a process question.
Okay, then what I would like to do, if at all possible, if we could counsel, if we could close the public hearing, and unless there's anybody else who wishes to speak on this one.
So Mayor, I do, I guess I do have one question. He has materials there, and I'd like to get that.
Yeah, yeah. So, what I would like to do, I would like to, a motion to close the public hearing on this one.
So moved.
Motion and a second by council member DeLisandro to close the public hearing in item 4.7. That's the public hearing regarding civil fines for property related violation assessments. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries seven zero. Now, as you start talking about possibilities, council member Lomond, questions?
So my question is, just so I have an understanding of how this works, we already had the, the, the hearing that, that had taken place before. So is our role here tonight, are we in a, in an appeals process here? Can we appeal that, that process? I'm just trying to understand, you know, is it quasi judicial? What, what can we do? What, what role can we play in this particular thing? Just trying to have a better understanding of what can happen. I just want to be careful of what we're doing.
Ms. Manderscheid, can you help us here?
Sure. Mayor members, so this is, this particular part of the process is about assessing it to the, to the tax role. It's the conclusion of a, of a longer process that starts with the EH, and then there are citations, and then you can appeal them. And then the assessment hearing is the second to the last step that happens when EH staff go and present their evidence to the administrative hearing officer. Our, we have a member of the city attorney's staff that basically makes the case. And then the hearing officer decides. And so you saw in previous ones, there was one case where the, where the matter came, or the property came off. So in this instance, that would be an option for the council. They could move forward with the balance of the role and simply remove this property and direct staff to meet with the property owner and talk to her some options, or whatever else you would like us to do. And then we could bring back, bring it back if necessary.
So Mayor, I like that last option, because I'm just, I'm really nervous about not having the details up here today and trying to make a decision. And so I'd rather just take this off of there. I'm not sure if we've done that in the past, but, but I would feel much more comfortable if we did that, to get this off of the, and then move everything else forward.
Thank you, council member. Other thoughts on this, council?
Do we have a timeline for when we would get resolution to the gentleman's problem? If we did that, for example?
I, I think we could set that. Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, the, the options within our given process, and I know never, no one ever wants to hear this, but the options that are available grow out of the policy that you all adopted a couple of years ago. The, the administrative process that we have, there aren't a lot of options for us to give deferrals or anything like that. They are in very limited circumstances. So any sort of action that we would be looking at, at the staff level at this stage, is really sort of a problem solving stage at this point. We don't have sort of a neat policy that this fits into. So if you'd like us to give you a report back, say at the last meeting of the month, or what's our reporting deadline to the county? Mayor members, I was just asking, the CFO, when are reporting deadline to the county is for the assessment roles?
Ah, item number.
Okay. So mayor members, we could have this come back, thank you Laurie, we could have this come back at the end of the month, if that would work with the report out. And then if, if at that time it made sense to put it on the roll, you would still have the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. So council, given what we have heard and what we, we don't know, given the, the information that Mr. Hildene has and that we haven't had a chance to see, I, I would feel most comfortable if we would, we would pull off 8444 Emerson for staff review, problem solving, as we've talked about, to come back to the council no later than the last meeting of the month here, September 26th, 8th, 29th, to the last meeting in, in September, and direct staff to work, to work with Mr. Hildene to, to problem solve as best as possible here. But then, with the idea that we approve the rest of the, of the assessments in item 4.7. Does that make sense? So I will make that motion to that
Second.
Idea. Motion and a second by council member Carter. Any further council discussion on this? Ms. Manderscheid, are we safe with that motion?
Mayor members, yes, I think everybody understands you're adopting the assessment role except 8444 Emerson, and you're directing staff to come back with an update at the end of the month.
Correct. Counsel member Lomond?
So just so I'm clear, it's just what I thought I heard was that there, there isn't a whole lot from a policy perspective that can be done in a situation like that. Am I understanding that correctly?
Mayor members, at the staff level, there are less options available to us than at the policy level matter, or at the policy level, rather. And so we'll just do a deeper dive into the information and see if we can come up with any partnerships with the HRA or, you know, and it's possible that there isn't anything available, and we'll just, we'll do some more digging.
I just don't want to
I will say, council member, it's possible, as we, as staff does a bit more of a deeper dive into this, it, it could come back to the council to decide whether or not this specific property on this assessment role is, is imposed or not.
I just didn't want to, you know, have folks leaving here thinking that, you know, that something certain was going to happen. So just want to be sure that we're not.
Mr. Hildene, are you clear as to what we're talking about here?
Yes.
Great. We've got a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. If you could work with staff, let's, let's see if we can figure out a solution here.
Okay.
A solution to this.
Do I need to give this to someone? This, this was given to me by the city, so I believe the city should have all the records. This one is a little odd because something got misfiled, and there's a bunch of papers in there about someone with too many cars in their driveway, which wasn't me.
Okay.
I only have one car. No, I've got a copy at home, too. That one just came in the mail. I don't know if that was supposed to have their final results in it or what, but.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming in tonight. Thank you for your help there, Ms. Manderscheid, getting us through that. I appreciate it. Council, that wraps up our item four, our hearings, what are they called? Hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. So we are moving on item five, our organizational business. Couple items in our organizational business, and the first is item 5.1. This is the Nine Mile Creek Corridor Renewal Project Update that we were supposed to get a couple of weeks ago, and we had to put you off. And I apologize for that, and thank you for coming back this evening. Renee Clark from our Park and Rec Department, Annie Cast of Thousands behind you, and so we'll get through this. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I am sharing this presentation tonight with Bob Simons, our project manager, senior civil engineer, and Derek Deichel from our SEH team, who will talk about some specific project details tonight. We are here to give the 60% design update. No action is requested from council tonight. We'll cover some background, process, and schedule, and then provide some improvements and design detail from Derek, review the Moyer Park design, and talk a bit about the playground design intent, and conclude with budget and next steps. We began the project about a year ago with data collection, understanding existing conditions with community collaboration to establish a project concept, and starting assumptions for design, concluding with pre-design at the end of last year, and a council decision not to pursue bike trails through Central Park. 2025 has focused on technical details. We were here in April with a 30% design update, and again, tonight with our 60% design update. We presented this information to the public at an open house on August 12th that was also provided on Let's Talk Bloomington. I'll turn it over to Derek to talk about the design details.
Good evening and welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity to present here today. We have a number of improvements for the park. Bob's going to, and Renee are going to talk about some of the aspects of it. One of the key components of here that we've identified on here is the natural resource parts. So improving habitat connectivity, improving our water quality in the stream banks, floodplain connectivity, really a whole suite of things that we're trying to target with this. Of course, paired with that are the other components that we've talked about here previously. Trails, our bridges that are providing access, some of retaining walls and other infrastructure that are, are part of this. And they certainly go hand in hand. We appreciate the natural resources, but recognize this is a heavily utilized park, and providing safe access for everybody to go out there and enjoy it is certainly a component of it, which is why we're including wayfinding and other components. Thanks, Bob. And Moyer Park specifically. For the natural resources, one of the targets out here is we want to make sure that we're not just doing something quick to just try to fix things up. The park is a, is a real gem of natural resources. The connectivity along the creek corridor into the Minnesota River is really a unique feature. And so we've always approached this project with wanting to be sustainable, resilient, really targeting the long term with this. And that's why we have initial actions to occur, but that's followed up with a long-term management plan so that we can continue those actions. And really want to focus on preserving those habitats, stabilizing our creek and water resources, maintaining those access points, and just making sure that we, we include that overall resilience. So this is really a, a decades-long project, not just a one or two-year construction activity. And so one of the key components out here is really focusing on our upland restoration. So we have a lot of areas here, we've broken it out into management zones, just to try to get a little bit more manageable from a, an assessment standpoint and from a contractor standpoint. And each of these areas have targeted goals. Overall, we're really, one of the key things we're trying to work on is managing our invasive species. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of buckthorn that's, that's present, garlic mustard, a lot of things out there that we really need to manage. And so most of the areas are getting some sort of a treatment for invasive species. Smaller areas, we're actually targeting some tree thinning, which sounds counterintuitive, that we're removing trees to help the forest be healthier. But it is a component that without management, we're really seeing some areas that are overcrowded, overshadowed, and really starting to have an impact by just kind of lack of natural management. And then unfortunately, we have a lot of areas that our ash trees have died from emerald ash borer. So we're also targeting some removal of those standing dead, and even some that are on the ground, just to make sure our management is more effective and a little bit easier. So overall, we're really trying to target, you know, 50 to 60 acres of, of native species establishment, really trying to improve these areas. And one of the key parts that even though it's a smaller number, is there is a bur oak savanna that were historically present all up and down the river valley, have now been encroached by other vegetation. That actual open oak savanna area is really lost because it's been encroached by these other species. And along with that, we've lost some of our areas of prairie. So one of our targeted restorations is actually to try to open up those savanna areas, connect them to the prairie, get that open understory, which will really look considerably different, but is really the community that was here. And the U has done some assessments on the oak trees in this area and found them to be hundreds of years old. And we really want to give them the best opportunity. They're very resilient. And we want to make sure that we preserve and encourage those. So that's a targeted community on, on some of the tops of our valleys. Related to the creek itself, as a defining feature throughout the, the central corridor here, we are looking at about 1,300 feet of stream bank stabilization or improvement. We have a number of techniques. The area on here in green indicates where we have some sort of specific activity plan. Some of these are relatively small, where we just have bank failure that we need to stabilize and improve the vegetation so that stays in place. We have a lot of techniques available. We like to use natural material when we can. So root wads and brush mats, rock riffles if we can to improve that habitat, riprap when we have to. There's some areas that are very unstable that armoring is, is probably the best course of action, but we're trying to keep it as natural as possible and try to limit that. Now, one of the key areas on the creek itself that we're proposing for restoration is there's a section that we actually want to reintroduce a remeander. The figure here with all the multicolored channels on there is the history of what Nine Mile Creek looked like in this area over various years. We could get aerial photographs. And as you can see, it doesn't stay in one place. It moves all over. And what we found is that in this particular reach, the big storm event in 1987 actually truncated that meander pattern. And now we have a straight, deep section that runs along the valley wall. And that continues to migrate some. It's come close to encroaching on trails. We see this as an opportunity to actually let the creek go back out into the valley, allow it to, to remeander, do the natural movement, kind of free it a little bit. And in the process, it also moves it away from our infrastructure. So we don't have that conflict of a trail and a creek fighting each other. Ultimately, the creek wins, or we have to do more work. So we'll let the creek do its thing, go out in the valley. This area happens to fall within the old mill pond. So even if you look at the aerial photo, it looks very wooded. It wasn't that long ago that was open and underwater. So this area is a really good target because it's not the same composition of trees as the hillsides have. They're much younger. They're more pioneer species. So to remove those and incorporate the meander really doesn't have a lot of effect on the, our wooded habitat, but it really opens up this area to be more of a natural feature. To accommodate that, we're actually proposing a boardwalk instead of the traditional asphalt trail crossing. Right now, we have a single bridge that crosses that straight section of channel. We're proposing to replace that section with a boardwalk that would allow that creek remeander to do its thing. It also reconnects that to the floodplain because we can excavate next to that, allow that channel to move, restore wetlands, and not have a single point where that creek has to cross under a constricted bridge, but allow that to meander and use that whole area under the boardwalk feature as well. So they kind of go hand in glove here a little bit, that the meander supports the boardwalk, the boardwalk supports the meander. These are, of course, optional components of the project, but we think there's a really key features here that the public has supported with the efforts here of trying to restore this natural habitat through this, through this area here. And I think residents are going to find it's a key feature that with this elevated boardwalk, the visibility over this area is very high, and the opportunity for some interpretive signs explaining why this was done, how natural processes work. We think this is going to be a key spot. Now, we do have other areas in the park where some infrastructure is proposed to be replaced. There are nine bridges throughout the park. Two of those, we are recommending replacement. Bridge five is structurally fine, but it's too low. So when the creek rises in elevation, it actually comes up onto the bridge deck and puts that at risk. So this is an opportunity to raise that and lengthen it. So we're spanning the creek, but providing a safer crossing and one that will, will last longer. Unfortunately, Bridge eight is the one that the south abutment did wash out and is currently closed. Same issue with Bridge five, that we want to make that higher in elevation and longer to span that area. And we are adjusting the alignment a bit to try to avoid that issue of that abutment eroding out and, and removing that. Unfortunately, the way the trail sits with that bridge missing is, it's no longer connected all the way to the river. So we are forward-thinking both with our natural resources and our infrastructure to make sure this is the best investment that we can. And Bob is going to talk about some of the other components.
I'll, I'll quickly touch on the timing of that Bridge eight that, that Derek was just talking about, and then I'll let Renee continue. But that Bridge eight, that's currently closed. We're working with a contractor now on, we, we're initially looking at the possibility of temporarily stabilizing that, that bridge for the time being to get it back open this fall or into this winter. But it's just not feasible to do so at this point. So for the safety of those using the area, and just for the fact that the, the bridge at some point, if we did get some extreme events or some larger events, may end up falling into the creek, we're going to work with the contractor on getting the bridge out yet this fall. So we've got some, a contractor on hand. We're just working on the logistics of it, and we like to get access from, we call the causeway down by the river, off of, access from Lyndale Avenue, so that they can get equipment in there to remove the bridge yet, yet this fall. So, and I'll let Renee continue from there.
Before you is a graphic of the Veterans Memorial, which will be at Harrison Park. That decision was made back in May in partnership with Bloomington Remembers Veterans. And that design is moving along together with the overall project design and is on schedule. Still with an opening planned for Veterans Day 2026. I'll provide a brief overview of Moyer Park, and then some of the park amenities and playgrounds. The whole idea for Moyer Park is putting a park in an existing prairie. It's replacing the existing building and existing shelter with a single open-air shelter with restrooms, redoing the parking lot, concentrating it on one area, trail loops, aligning disc golf, and of course, a new playground. The open-air shelter, again, is a pre-manufactured building with Romtech, the same company that did the Cedar Avenue Bridge and the recent Normandale Maintenance Garage and Restroom Building, monoslope roof, capacity of about 100 people, and again, with two restrooms. The disc golf course is realigned. We are keeping nine holes. That was in consideration during design. We're improving safety with this new alignment and reducing the path and disc golf conflicts that exist today. The playground is designed with inclusivity, inclusiveness and accessibility in mind. We have been coordinating with the community, specifically at the open house, on the play elements for each specific play area. We've had an opportunity on Let's Talk Bloomington for people to select, vote on their play preferences for equipment. And then we are taking those concept ideas to a focus group, actually tomorrow evening in Moyer Park, with advocates and parents of children and adults with disabilities and concerned about inclusivity. So after that, we will collectively, with the design team and staff, select a preferred concept and bring that forward for public review.
All right. I'll close things out with a little bit of information on project budget and funding and our next steps. What you see in front of you now for, for overall costs is about the 60% estimate range right now. This includes all conservative contingency as well as the soft costs, the engineering and admin, admin costs as well. We're kind of staying in those three buckets, as we've been showing every step of the way between natural water resources, Moyer Park, and then the trails, access, bridges, and walls. We have a few different funding sources. We have our local option sales tax of the 20 million. We also, as you all know, through the pavement management program, we have franchise We also, as you all know through the pavement management program, we have franchise fees that cover some different maintenance techniques for our pavement management program, one of those being park trail improvements and maintenance. So we'll be using some funding from that for the wire and Central Park trails. And then also working very closely with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, they approved a plan amendment this past spring for a million dollars to incorporate into the project for stream and creek improvements. And we'll be working closely with them as we move into this fall and a cooperative agreement as well for the project. And then also any specific stormwater utility items, we'll use funding from our stormwater utility budget for that. And we're still looking into potential grants, grants to the DNR. There's some conservation partner legacy grants that there's a few rounds that come out over the course of the fall. Now that we're kind of narrowing down into our specific projects, we're going to look at the possibility of applying for some grants to help with some of this work as well. In regards to maintenance, similar to the last time we were here at 30%, we have an operation and maintenance plan that'll be included with the ecological management plan, which is almost in draft form and ready for staff review here. In regards to the natural resources piece, there'll be a three to five year establishment period that'll be included in the project contract that the contractor will be responsible to maintain. After that, park maintenance crews will take over. A lot of the natural resource components after that establishment period are self-sustaining, but our park maintenance crews will continue the management of that as well as the maintenance of the trails, the bridges, the stairs, the park buildings. All those items are already maintaining. They'll just be restored items that they'll continue to maintain. And we've also heard from a number of different groups interested in some adopt a park or volunteer opportunities for the natural resource preservation. So we're interested in working with them on that as well. In regards to where we're at right now with approvals and permitting, the environmental assessment worksheet, or the EAW, is out for public comment currently. Basically lays out the environmental impacts and facts about the project, and it goes to many different agencies. We're required to send it out to the DNR, MPCA, Indian Affairs Council, state archaeologists, many different agencies it goes out to. The review period started last week, September 2nd, and goes through October 2nd. And that kind of kicks off our permitting process now. We've been working very closely with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District and their technical team. We're looking to do a pre-permit submittal in the near future to them and then continue this fall with the remainder of our permit submittals. And then looking forward to next steps, we met with Park and Sustainability Commissions back in August, gave this same presentation. As we move into the months of October, November, December, we'll be looking to move towards 90 and 100% plans, continue with the permitting process. As I mentioned, working on a cooperative agreement with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. We'd intend on coming back to council on the commissions later in 2025 when we're at that 90 to 100% range. And then early 2026, looking to finalize plans and then start up construction here in the spring. And I should note, Derek was talking about the tree thinning and tree removal. We'll be looking to get a contract out in early 2026 to do that tree removal and thinning over the course of the winter months before March would be the plan. But that's where we're at right now, and we will open it up to any questions or discussion that you have for us. Thank you.
Well, thank you much for the update and good work. This is definitely moving along very nicely and some exciting prospects here. So thank you so very much for this. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the information. I have, I guess, three sets of, three comment areas. The first one, just wanted to acknowledge, thank you for the folks from Bloomington Remembers Veterans for being here with us tonight, sticking it out to the after hours here. To, I'm taking that as tacit endorsement of where we're going, which makes me very happy because that's a long overdue and super exciting. It leads me to my second question, which is, and I think you started to allude to it, Bob, when you were speaking to this. It feels like there's enough explicit work in this project area that things can be happening in parallel. Meaning, for example, do you have to wait for the permit or the review, the environmental review process to, for example, get the Harrison Park updates for Bloomington Remembers Veterans up and running? Or can that be done independently because they're not subject to that review process? Likewise, can you be doing the work at Moyer Park that's more the playground and the, you know, facility? Help me understand if you can, like, do we have to wait for everything to be, you know, ticked off and done and dusted before we can move these pieces forward? Or is there a process by which some aspects of it can get going faster than others?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember DeLisandro, that's a great question. And actually, we've been discussing that internally as well. We're trying to get this out into a few different projects between the natural resources and the Moyer Park piece and the Harrison Park piece and things of that sort. And we're starting to look at, well, it's a great thing you bring up about the permit review. If we would, like, for example, going with Harrison Park and the Vets Memorial area, if we ran into issues with permitting where it was going to take a little bit longer, that's an item where we would break off and we would do that sort of work under a separate contract. But we'd like to keep as much of this work under one contract as we can. But to answer your question about can we do other parts first? Like I mentioned, the tree removal component here in early 2026, we look to break that off into its own contract to do that in the winter months when it's more conducive to doing that sort of work. When it comes to the other components of the project, if there's areas where we can break them off or if the permitting process is going to run us into a bind, then yes, we will look to break those projects out into their own separate projects. But we'd like to try to keep as much of the work under a fewer amount of projects if possible, if we can keep the schedule rolling. But if we're going to run into hiccups like with permitting or whatever it might be, then yes, we will look to break those portions up. And we will be able to, depending on the components of those areas. I don't know if that gets at your question, but...
It does, thank you. And then, so then the third question that I have is, given the, a very, very large amount of comments and public feedback regarding this area was anti-bicycles in the area as we know, right? And so we agreed to that, we understood the feasibility, we couldn't do it. Now we're hearing on the regular that bikes are now there anyway. And so my question to you all is, when you think about maintenance of this park, what are you considering from a security perspective or a safety perspective that might need to be considered that in order for us to preserve that construct? Which is that, you know, we say that bikes are not allowed there. We want that to be true. It's good for people for that to be true. And yet, you know, people do it anyway. Like, how are we trying to be proactive, I guess, about some of those challenges as we think about maintenance of the park over the long term?
Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, counsel. Those are very valid questions, things that the design team has talked about. We do hear regularly that there are bikes down there today and expect that we will be managing and policing that for the end of time. And it's something the design team will keep talking about. We know physical barriers, like the bridge we fenced off, still doesn't keep people from crossing the bridge. So it'll be something that we will need to manage long-term, something that the design team will keep talking about, how we could use design technique to potentially mitigate that. Really clear signage with this project, with the wayfinding that we're proposing as part of this project is one of the key elements that we're relying on for education and awareness, which I think is a bit lacking down there today. So it is a concern and something the design team will keep talking about.
Okay. I appreciate it. I have thought for the last two years, I haven't mentioned it before, that the, knowing that a third of our entire city has set aside his green space, that there's this idea of park rangers that we, you know, that we just don't have. We don't have like a roving, a ranging, roving group of people that are constantly helping people understand how to best take care of our parks. And anyway, I'm a big fan of Yogi Bear anyways, maybe that's why I'm thinking about it. Okay. And the final component of this is, I think I saw it in comments and I would just like to endorse it. A very large number of the people that use this particular park are folks who are considered by age to be elderly. And I love that. I think that's wonderful. If we haven't budgeted for it, I would like to make sure that we are planning for lots of stopping spots and seats and benches and other things like that along the way for folks. I was there at the open house that happened. Everybody seemed really happy, but that, you know, that was a consistent thing and I saw it on your list. And so to the extent that we don't have that currently planned for, I think we should get some additional resting spots, even if they're really natural, you know, big rocks or something like that, but places where people can feel confident that they can sit and comfortably rest because of how hilly and challenging it can be to navigate so that we can continue to let that population specifically enjoy the park. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mu and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Mu.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two questions, hopefully they're quick. Question regarding the remeander. How do we maintain that as the creek remeanders and deal with washouts and footings and things like that? What's the plan for that?
Right. So the remeander is putting the channel back into more of a natural sinuosity that hopefully will be more stable, but it doesn't prevent what you're saying from happening, which could actually happen anywhere along the creek. So short-term and a just completing construction standpoint, it may be more susceptible until it fully vegetates and stabilizes. But any portion of the creek has that chance to move in and interact with our infrastructure. So specific to that area, I think partly that's why we like the boardwalk feature is that that's not the same as impacting a bridge. We've got helical piers that that can move around. Part of that area that we think will help as well is, right now, the channel that it cut is fairly narrow, deep, and very fast-moving. The remeander allows us the opportunity to cut the banks down adjacent to the channel. So right now, when the floodwaters come up, it tends to stay in the channel and move very quickly. If we actually connect that to the floodplain, that water will come up and out of the bank through the vegetated area, slow that water down, keep some of those erosive forces dispersed rather than in the channel. And should over a long period of time, actually be a more stable section than some of the other parts that are more active. But you're 100% right. We can't prevent it. It is a thing of continuing to monitor when you see negative forces that are perhaps moving that in a direction that may cause a problem down the road, address them while they're small and manageable and can be done by hand and not waiting until this is a massive effort to fix. So part of our recommendation would be a monitoring component of all of these natural resource activities, particularly around the creek, because that's most likely to change quickly. And so we do need to monitor it, and that would be part of our recommendation. But it's very astute observation that we can't necessarily control it, nor necessarily do we want to. That usually has an unintended consequence.
Thank you. And so I'm assuming we're going to plan to ensure that there's easy access for people, machinery in those situations where the creek does move and we have to get down there and we don't have to cut through everything again.
Yeah. So this particular location is actually quite accessible from Harrison, and there's no other bridge crossings or other constrictions that make that more difficult. The boardwalk itself may be a challenge for some equipment, but access to that remeander is one of the better spots in the park, actually. So it's a little ideally suited for something that may require more maintenance than some of the other areas.
Good. All right. I'm just going to, I'm just out there. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff for answering my questions ahead of time, and I'll put the bookmark again on the bikes. I had the question about that, in terms of that, how that's, I think that was responded to, and I appreciate that. Continue looking into that. I'll go back to the shelters piece. I brought this up at sustainability, and I won't go that same route that I did there. But I'm curious, we sort of have two shelters there now. This is kind of, we were kind of moving to one shelter. Was there any concern at all raised about losing that additional shelter at all? I know it's not used much, but any concern at all with that? I know it says kind of we're smaller groups and it was inside more.
Yep. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, and members of council. The existing building isn't heavily programmed. It is indoor space that we utilize for playground programming, but it's one of the old buildings in our system. So we, to be commiserate with the programming that the parking in this park supports, which is many activities that we're proposing here. The size of the shelter was put out for public comment, considered by staff and the design team to fit with what the park and the surrounding area supports. So we think that's a good fit. And then the size is flexible to allow larger groups, but not in excess of what parking and things can support.
Appreciate that. I comment. My last question I have is around, it seems like when we first got on council, we were replacing all of the kit equipment. And we had, you know, had bonded out for that and gotten that all done. And now it appears that we're in the process of kind of redoing it. And so the question kind of comes in my mind that, okay, so about 10 years, we redid this. So are we going to be doing this every? And I know there's requirements around that equipment. I totally get that. Do we have, so my first question is, you know, is that something we need to kind of be, you know, doing every 10 years? Are we budgeting for that? You know, are there other things that are like that? You know, for example, we've got that golf thing that's out there, stairs, you know, has been an issue. How are we handling kind of these future expenses that are out there that really have an impact? You know, because I really wanted to see this done based on that because we've got some deferred maintenance, as you will, that's out there. If you want to comment on that at all, I'd appreciate that.
Mayor, Councilmember Loman, councils. Thanks for that really great question. And asset management is something that is continuing to improve and evolve in parks and maintenance. Specific to playgrounds, we are looking at the number of playgrounds in the system, how we're covering the city geographically with playgrounds, and a more precise replacement schedule for playgrounds within that 15 to 20-year frame, which men, we do have several playgrounds that exceed that. So we are looking, and that will be a plan coming for discussion later on this year or more likely early next year, about how we manage assets like playgrounds on a replacement schedule that is sustainable and offers safe, quality experiences. Asset management through, for all of this will be part of the operations and maintenance plan with replacement schedules that we'll be considering as a design team.
I think you really appreciate that. I just hope we really, Mayor, kind of looking and being sure that happens because one of the things I think is unfortunate, we produced this great product and then it kind of tails off. And then we just don't ever get back to it. And it might be, you know, 15, 20 years later, and I just would hate to see those stairs again falling apart and people, you know, constantly calling me and saying, hey, what's going on with these stairs? Why can't we get them repaired? So I know you're thinking about it, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
Counsel, anything else? Councilmember Rivas.
They just did some meandering at the Ice Creek, right? Have you heard of that at all? I went and visited the National Wildlife Refuge, and then the people from there took me to the Ice Creek, and they were working on it, on the meandering area. I haven't gone back to revisit, but the whole idea was to slow the creek down so that erosion would be diminished by it. And it works in many places. I've seen it happen in bigger rivers that I don't care to comment now, but out on the West Coast, they did a couple of things like that, and it does work. So I'm just looking forward to see this. This is the one thing that I do love out of the three projects. Okay. Just, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. So when will we see you again? January, February, somewhere in there?
Mayor, we'll be later this year, be looking later this year, early 2026, but our goal would be to be coming back to you in late 2025.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks much. Moving on in our agenda, counsel, and if you recall, we added, we flopped item 5.2 and 5.3. So I'm going to go with item 5.2, which is now our city council policy and issue update. And I will do just a quick recap of our city council listening session from tonight. We had two speakers this evening. Again, unique speakers, folks we haven't heard from before. Michael Corlitz had questions about the, my support that I mentioned last week about the support for the idea of the state giving local municipalities to enact laws or ordinances around firearms. And we had a good conversation, and it's a conversation, I think, that will evolve and continue to evolve as we move through this. And for folks who don't know, we had a press conference among mayors, basically asking the state if there was not going to be any action at the state or federal level regarding firearm control that give the authority to cities to do something on that behalf. So a good conversation with Michael and appreciate him coming forward. Then we also heard from Jeff Johnson, who had all kinds of comments about aircraft noise in East Bloomington. And I think it's, we came to the conclusion, a lot of it had to do with construction on a couple of runways that will hopefully be done this fall. But we also encouraged Jeff to go to the next NOC committee meeting. That's the Noise Oversight Committee. And that will be, that's a committee of the Metropolitan Airports Commission. And that's, I think, the second week of September, we gave him the details and the information for Mr. Johnson to attend that. Those were our only two speakers at the listening session tonight. And as I said, once again, two unique speakers that we have not heard from before, so very good along...
good along those lines. Beyond that, um, I don't think I have anything else. I, I do want to say, um, I mean, we're a couple of weeks removed from it now, but the, the horrific shooting at Annunciation School back, uh, earlier this month. I, I do want to thank the, the, the public safety, uh, people, personnel, both from, uh, certainly from Minneapolis who did outstanding work, but also our own Bloomington officers responded. And it was, uh, it was a chaotic situation that was, in many cases, a horrific situation for our first responders and our officers to deal with. And they did it, uh, like they always do professionally and with, uh, with empathy and with bravery. And just hats off to not only the Bloomington Police, but the Minneapolis Police, who did an outstanding job in an impossible situation. That is all I have this evening. Ms. Sedine, do you have anything?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, thanks for lifting up our team. I'm gonna lift up another group of people within the city. So, uh, Bloomington, we all received two national awards at the 3CMA Savvy Awards. 3CMA means the City County Communications Association. Uh, and, uh, the competition, it was pretty fierce. There were nearly 1,200 entries from around the US and Canada. The Notable Neighbor Video Series won an Award of Excellence. They got third place. And the Nine Mile Creek Corridor Renewal Community Engagement received the Savvy Award first place. That does not happen very much. They don't give away the first place a whole lot. So, in the resident participa- uh, participation category, so congratulations, as we just heard the presentation tonight of where they're at in the process. And, uh, kudos to the communications team, coed, park and rec, public works teams and everyone who's worked on this. Uh, it continues to pay off in lots of different ways.
Congratulations to them. Fabulous work. Counsel, anything to offer? Councilmember Lohman.
Just two real quick questions. As, um, I wanted to see if we had any follow-up for those, uh, folks on Newton Avenue. Has staff started working on that at all? Okay, great. And then the secondary question I had was around, um, with that, that Ankilave, uh, group that was working on, on trying to get their project done. I know they had a quick deadline and turnaround on that. Have we been able to support that, um, to get that done? I know, um, uh, and I'm not looking for anything detailed, but just want to make sure the project is kind of moving forward.
Yeah, uh, councilmember Lohman, uh, and councilmembers, uh, we, uh, you all recall, you had some conversation around prevailing wage and that, uh, had, uh, they listened to that and they are still considering building on that site even after that conversation. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Hey, Mayor, I just wanted to piggyback off your, your comments with the, um, the, the Annunciation, Annunciation community. And just to, to share that all of us are here are, are thinking about those families and that community. We're six and a half miles away from Annunciation, so I know there are people here who go there. We have personal, I have personal friends who go there. So I want to let those folks know that we are thinking about them. Thank you again to our police and fire who dropped everything they were doing to go help our Minneapolis officers and counterparts as well. And I had the opportunity to attend, um, a youth demonstration that would happen here, as some high schoolers, middle schoolers came to Civic Plaza to show their concerns regarding the, the issues that we have around guns and shootings in schools. Um, and that really touched me. You guys all know, I have kids and I'm a parent and, um, hearing that really had a, a, a very big impact on me, um, considering Annunciation is literally six and a half miles away. That's closer than the length of Bloomington. Bloomington's seven miles long. And, um, I've spoken with our city managers and, uh, I think a couple of days afterwards, um, to quote the late Tupac, um, "We can never go, we can never go nowhere unless we share with each other. We gotta start making changes, learn to see me as a brother instead of two distant strangers." And I think the, the issue around guns is one thing, but there are deeper, more systemic issues that we need to address as well. And so, um, asking our staff to help us dig deep, not only address guns and gun safety, but the drivers of economic security, of food access in the city, of housing access in the city, to address all these things that bring gun violence up to the top as a symptom that we have in our community. And so, um, I am, I'm optimistic about our council and our ability to make things happen. So thank you for joining those mayors and asking the state to give us the ability to do that, because we are the ones that do it, just like you said. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Revis.
Just a quick comment. I, I don't know if you know, I'm a big pro-gun. I hunt. I own a bunch of guns. I do have a hard time, you know, accepting all that goes on. However, I do own a couple of AR-15s and AR-10s, but I don't think they're necessary. I use them for recreation. I go out to the ranch and empty a few magazines, take them home, put them away for a few months. That said though, I, I think in the, it, thinking about saving the lives of the innocent, I would be more than happy to be, to give them up or to do something about reducing the availability to the public. Really, I don't hunt with them, because they're not really made for that. Um, but, uh, you know, it, it hurts. I, I don't have young kids, but I do have grandkids. And it's, uh, uh, to actually put it in those terms, uh, it really gets to you. Even though I have been a, one of the most outspoken people, uh, against gun control, um, you know, I do believe that, uh, I love my AR-15s, but I don't think they're necessary. I just say that. But, you know, we had to be careful on how we implement laws or regulations in regards to them, because I have a big example, uh, LA, Chicago, two of the worst crime-ridden cities in the country. Nobody is allowed to carry in those cities. There has to be some kind of, uh, something going about. I, I, I echo what you mentioned in regards to housing, uh, affordability and all of that, uh, because it, the reality is that a lot of people commit crimes because they don't have any other ways of getting what they need. Uh, you know, it's not an excuse for them to do that, but the availability of weapons to the crime, to the criminals is always there. The people that will lose the, the ability to have, uh, legally owned guns are the ones that don't commit any crimes. So we had to be careful how we approach it, but I, I mean, I would be more than willing to give up my semi-automatic weapons, um, because I use them for recreation only, not for hunting or any other purposes, just to go and empty a few magazines, uh, at the ranch, uh, so. But I do empathize with all the people that are in a lot of pain right now because of their children getting hurt for, um, in this case. So I got, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Counsel, anything else tonight? Very good. We're gonna move on to item 5.3, which is our closed session, but before we go there, uh, it's highly likely we're gonna push past our nine o'clock deadline. And we don't want to do it in closed session, so I'm gonna ask council now, I'm gonna propose that we, uh, extend our deadline to adjourn no later than 9:30 tonight. I will make that motion. Motion in a second to extend our council deadline to 9:30 tonight. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Now we're gonna move on to item 5.3, which is a closed session for litigation management related to the 2024-110 Normandale Boulevard PMP Trail and Sidewalk Improvement Project. Uh, state law allows, uh, allows cities to close council meetings for a variety of reasons, uh, not too many, but a variety, including, uh, including, uh, litigation management. And that's what we're gonna be doing this evening. What we'll do is, uh, consider a, uh, a resolution to go into closed session. We will go into closed session and I believe this is attorney-client privilege that we're gonna be going into. And so we're gonna be going into a session with attorney-client privilege. We will then, uh, come out of closed session and we will adjourn the meeting in open session. So, uh, that is what we would do. And right now I would, uh, look for a motion to adopt the resolution directing the closure of a public meeting of the city council. We got a motion by councilmember Moos, second by councilmember DeLaSandro, to adopt the resolution directing the closure of a public meeting of the city council. Ms. Manderschad, did I forget anything here?
No, Mayor. That's all. Great.
Very good. We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Take a minute here to go into closed session and then we will open up in closed session, something like that. We'll, we'll continue the meeting in closed session in just a moment.